Plagiate. That's something you guys don't want to be involved in, then please excuse yourself from the room and then when you get, we get done, you're welcome to come back in. Jason, would you leave us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us some prayer tonight?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful night. You've allowed us to be here together. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your perfect will in this place in Jesus' name.
You need a roll call, please?
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Prochemsikola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Of form is declared.
We have a modification to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have a modi- a couple of modifications to the agenda this evening. We would like to remove G two A, the four H endowment presentation. We'd like to remove J one, resolution twenty twenty four dash ten, the procurement policy. And J three, twenty twenty four dash twelve resolution for the employment handbook.
So moved. Second. Been moved in seconded. Modify the agenda of removing G two A. All four H endowment presentation. And remove J one and J three, J one being resolution adopting a new procurement policy for the city of Montevista. And J three, resolution updating the employee handbook for the city of Montevista. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yeah.
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 Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Prochemsikola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the modification, removing G two A, the four H endowment presentation. J one, resolution twenty twenty four dash ten for the procurement policy. And J three, resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve for the employment handbook.
All right, approval of consent agenda, minutes from regular meeting from August fifteenth and review and approval of accounts payable. Motion.
The motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. It's been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda for the mi- regular men- meeting of August fifteenth, twenty twenty four and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Prochemsikola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll go to citizen comments, special presentations. Citizen comments, said council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Let me just comments to three minutes and council will not take action at this meeting. Anybody?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor. Wrong, wrong comment. Excuse me.
You get a turn at the end.
What?
You get a turn at the end.
Yeah.
I can fit to one little piece, paper.
There's always so many notes. Okay, we'll go to scheduled appearances. Uh, element engineering wastewater treatment facility plan.
Um, would you please call Mister Vance to do an introduction?
Sure. Mister Vance, so good evening, council. Um, you know, with everything that's been going on with the design of our wastewater plant. I thought it would be a good idea and I asked element if they would come up and do a presentation to kind of give you an idea of where we are with the process. Um, where everything's doing. There's been a ton of work, kind of not necessarily behind the scenes. But at least for citizens, they haven't really seen much. They've seen about three years worth of rates going up. And people are starting to ask what's going on. So I thought tonight would be a good opportunity to hear from element about what they've been doing and where we currently stand within the project. So I'd like to introduce Richie Cope and Mike Hager from Element to kind of give you that presentation tonight.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Richie Cup. I'm with Element Engineering. Uh, get a little more into who I am in the org chart and then this is Mike. With Element Engineering, he's a project manager for most of our civil design services. So. Here today to talk to you guys about the wastewater system improvements project. Uh, we're element engineering, so we're consulting engineer on the project, leading the design, carrying sub consultants with us. So, uh, I'll just jump right into it. We'll give you the who, what, when, where, why, how, albeit a little out of order. And then we got some. Nice visuals prepared for you guys to kind of, you know, conceptualize and make it a little bit more tangible, what we're doing here and what the end product's gonna look like. So really quick, the who on the project delivery team, we've got Mike Hager, civil design project manager. I'm Richie Cup. I'm the. Civil engineering, process engineering, project engineer type guy. We got, uh, Nick Markcott, who runs the company and Alice Arsenal, who's the process engineering project manager and they were on the event we were supposed to be. And then as far as the team that we're working with here with y'all, we've got Gigi, the city manager. We got Bobby Abada, the O R C. For your water and wastewater systems and we got Rob Vance here. So just going over the quick, why the project needs to happen. So essentially, um. Your existing wastewater treatment plants got hit with metals limits in your discharge permits. And they lack the available technology for us to retrofit them into compliance. So that's why we have the proposed new wastewater treatment. Um. To kind of speak to the rate schedules and, and what that means, um, in the, why the increases need to happen, the existing rate schedule is insufficient to bear the capital costs of the project. So for us to be able to. Complete the project, to bring the city into compliance and avoid excessive fees from the state, uh, we pursued a grant loan combination through the USDA's RD loan program. So we ended up, um. I think it was about thirty-three percent grant, sixty-six percent loan in that ballpark, a third, two thirds. Um, and then so one of the conditions of that grant loan program is you need to raise rates commensurate with the, the debt accrued. So, um, I think this is the third increase for us. Yeah. So this is the third and final increase. Uh, coming into the, the project. And so the reason we do wait. The, sorry, rate increases ahead of project is to further reduce the loan accrual. Um, when the project actually goes to construction. So you guys are. Have more capital funds available to you to reduce the debt burden of the city. Um, so this is just the how, this is how wastewater project gets designed, permitted and constructed in the state of Colorado. It's fairly, uh, niche here, I would say. Um, so the first step is we're defining the scope and the need. So the scope and the need is you've got two wastewater treatment plants. Uh, both of them might be available process technologies to treat particularly for metals limits. Which is happening to almost every wastewater treatment entity along the Rio Grande right now. Uh, they're having, when it's coming into effect. Particularly for arsenic, copper and zinc. Um, your city is a little special and has a couple of extra, uh, along for the ride. But, um, primarily those three. So. The project need and scope is defined. Once we get there, we have to confirm available project funding. So this ties back into why the need for rate increases. And that's because we pursued a grant loan combination to make sure that we were able to complete this project and bring the city into compliance. The next step is applying for water quality planning targets. And so that's essentially, uh, for all intents and purposes, what's the new discharge permit looking like? For your new wastewater plant. Um, so we applied for those a while back and I'll get into the schedule a little bit later here. The next one is submit site applications to C D P H E. So under regulation twenty-two, um, wastewater treatment works owners are required to submit site applications for collection system lift stations, which is proposed as part of this project and we'll get into that in a second. As well as wastewater treatment plants. So. After those get approved or sometimes concurrent, and we'll get into that in a second here, you submit your design reports to C D P H E. So this is nearing the. Ninety to a hundred percent design for what would be considered, uh, process engineering designing, you know, the treatment systems and technologies, lift stations, stuff like that. Um. There are separate processes for lift stations. Those are basis of design reports and there's separate process for wastewater treatment plants. Those are process design reports. The next step is while C D P H E reviews those, you work with your sub consultants, that's architectural, structural, electrical, mechanical, all those guys. And you finalize the wastewater treatment plant, lift station designs and make sure that once you receive that final approval from the state, you're at least nearing your a hundred percent design, including everybody else's scope. Then we go ahead, we bid the project. Once we award the project, we issue a notice to proceed to the contractor. And then we begin construction and then. Towards the latter half of construction, we'll enter what we call the startup phase. Um, and so startup is kind of this staged thing because you're going to need to fill basins at the plant. That'll take several weeks, sometimes a few days, depending on your treatment process. Um, and then other things will take, you know, a couple of months of operations such as, uh, like biosolids, de-watering technologies. Um, so that's kind of an ongoing period of wastewater treatment plant startup. And then we enter into regular operation in the warranty phase and then just continued operation and compliance. So as far as the project is defined, what's the scope? Um, we've got a wastewater treatment plant replacement. And what that actually means is we're replacing both of the wastewater treatment plants with a single consolidated plant. Which takes us to number two, the Henderson lift station in force main. So the Henderson wastewater treatment plant, which is located here within city limits, will be decommissioned and converted into a force main. That will convey all the wastewater collected within city limits to the veterans wastewater treatment plant where we're constructing a new wastewater plant. We're doing some collection system upgrades and rehabilitations. The city has a problem with, um, inflow and infiltration, which is primarily tied to, you know, high groundwater during summer irrigation season. Uh, and so what we do is we typically line most pipes that we can, replace the ones that are cracked. Um, and replace, you know, brick manholes, manholes that are made with corrugated metal pipe and stuff like that. Um, and then the last step will be decommissioning the existing wastewater treatment plants and diverting all of that flow to the new facility. So just a quick rundown of how the new plant's gonna operate, we're going to use mechanical screens and grit separation to remove coarse solids. Uh, removing those is required by the state and it's also required by treatment manufacturers of activated sludge facilities, um, to protect the submerged equipment. From things like, you know, uh, rags, uh, hygiene products, two by fours, you'll see it all in a collection system. Uh. Then we've got remove B O D and T S S and nutrients. Um, so we're accomplishing that with an aeromot activated sludge treatment process, a really, uh, time proven technology. Um, and it also does some phosphorus removal, but that's not necessarily related to the city's discharge permit limits. After that, the, the big problem is getting addressed, which is removing metals. So the issue right now is wh- why can't we just add this filter? That's what that is. And in case it's not clear, it's just a bunch of squiggles. Um, why can't we just add that filter on the end of the lagoons? It's because the lagoons don't produce sufficient water quality for use of those filters to remove metals. Instead, they'll remove things like nitrogen and phosphorus instead because they're more available, because the lagoon treatment process. After that, we'll disinfect with U V. Uh, U V is becoming more ubiquitous in, in wastewater engineering, just because less chemicals is great. It makes it easier for wastewater treatment operators and it simplifies discharge permits. Um, the last bit there, we have some sludge de-watering and that's because once you. Start using an activated sludge facility, you have to waste sludge. We call that waste activated sludge. Um, and it happens between two to five times a week. Uh, your facility will be in the ballpark of three times a week when it's like. At capacity. Um, and so what that does is that reduces hauling costs. So if you just, if you take a biosolids, that's one percent. Solid is ninety-nine percent wire and you convert it to two percent, well, you just doubled your efficiency and we target somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent solids by weight. So that just significantly reduces disposal costs of sludge.
Richie, before you click on there. So I don't know if I'm gonna be able to explain it well enough for you, but Rob will know what I'm talking about.
Hmm.
Um. You talked about the screening process. Talk a little bit more extensively about that because this is something really. Important for our citizens. Some of them are gonna have to get their minds retrained because of the sensitivity of this plant.
Okay, um, yeah, I think what you're, you're talking about is, you know, first of all, yes. Uh, coarse solids, but also the city has a history of problems with fog, fog, uh, fats, oils and greases. Um, and so that's also included in this remove coarse solids, fats, oils and greases aren't coarse solids, but that's the easiest place to get them out of the treatment stream, the process stream. Um, so. Uh, fats, oils and greases are a huge problem. Um, I think this community especially has an issue with them and so downstream processes are negatively affected by those pretty substantially. But, uh, you know, at least in the collection system, what that does is that reduces the capacity of pipes because fog. Works like a scale. And so you have a pipe like this, but if everybody's pouring oil down the drain, eventually it becomes this, right? And so, um. Just based on geometry of pipes, that's not a one to one, oh, I lost an inch, so I lost one cubic feet per second of capacity. It's, uh. It's exponential. So, um, we have a fog removal system proposed, but that's. That's kind of a last ditch effort and what really needs to happen is as a, as a community, uh. There needs to be work on a fog implementation program, which just reduces, um, fog making it into the stream in the first place. And that includes things like grease interceptors. Um. Mechanical grease interceptors, grease traps, stuff like that. As well as like, uh, we call them best management practices, but it's things like food service establishments. Having traps in their drains, you know, not throwing food scraps down, you know, the drain into the sewer and scraping them off into the trash. Throwing flour into your oily pans and scraping it off into the trash instead of just rinsing them and things like that. Um, and that's, that's pretty critical to a, a healthy plant. Um, cause just like the pipes getting gummed up, treatment equipment gets gummed up with fog too.
And on some of these commercial businesses then, what are, what would they need to make sure that they have in place to help catch some of this as well?
Right. So, um, in terms of structural implementations, that's things like, uh. Uh, screens in your drains, um, implementing grease traps. There's, uh, we've actually prepared a memo. For y'all of a handful of structural implementations and what makes the most sense for the, the city and, you know, kind of looking at it on a case by case basis. But really it's, um, gonna come down to. Uh, looking at, you know, where is that business located? Is it in the historic area of town where there's no room for you to install a grease interceptor? That's the size of a couple manholes. Or. Do you have the size for that? And then we would kind of tailor, okay, well, this makes the most sense. This structural inflammation, implementation makes the most sense for you. Uh, ideally, everybody has a grease interceptor. You can look at places like Grand Junction and it's draconian, like you just have a grease interceptor. Um, and there's no, there's no arguing with it. Um, and then there's also like a maintenance policy. Included with that, you know, you have to remove the grease that's accumulated in your interceptors once they reach like thirty percent of the volume. Um, in maintaining records like that. And that's just, you know, again, that's just critical to ensuring that the collection system that we're investing the money in to rehabilitate isn't conveying something. That is deleterious to both the collection system that we just paid to rehabilitate as well as the wastewater treatment plant. That we just worked over capital funds to construct to make sure that we're in compliance.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So where, uh, so right here, you've got a view of the veterans wastewater treatment plant here. Um, we've got two lagoons. Those are used for, uh. Detaining wastewater during the winter months when the plants mothballed. And the plant's actually that, uh, area to the upper left, um, presently. So what we're gonna end up doing, there's a manhole that comes across at the Empire Canal, kind of right smack dab center. No. Uh. But we'll go ahead and we'll tee off of that manhole and we'll redirect. So what we'll do is this southeast pond. Um, we'll bring in a bunch of imported fill and we'll construct the, the treatment, new treatment facility there. And that's, um. That's really advantageous for several reasons. It significantly reduces the length and duration of bypass pumping. Um, and construction phasing, which really complicates the construction of facilities when you have, you know, existing treatment taking place. So it really, it just overall makes it an easier grab for y'all. For the Henderson lift station, um, what we're going to do is there's a bypass line at the head of the plant. We'll run that to that second pond there, which is kind of in the center of this photo on the left. And we'll construct the new lift station right there behind the headworks facility. Um, and then this figure over here on the right is a, a rough alignment of where the force main will route through. Basically through the existing plant, um, that was chosen to save a ton of money and inconvenience for routing the pipe. Instead to the west of the facility, um, the right of ways very busy there and just cost a lot of money in terms of ducking utilities as well as repairing asphalt. Um, heads out of the plant along east, south through Sky High, uh, through existing easements that the city already owns. And then east along Sherman, uh. And we actually, uh, were here earlier today, walking the alignment to make sure that's constructible. There will be some minor jogs and. Differences from what you see here in the figure, but, uh, the gist is there, we're taking it from Henderson, we're taking it to veterans. All right, let's get into the win. So, uh, just going back to, I just modeled this off of the how, how do we get to a new wastewater treatment plant? So define project need and scope. Um. The city received a notice of violation cease and desist order back in August of twenty twenty and that's for both wastewater treatment facilities. That's not just one or the other. Um, and that's just relating to, again, the metals limits that, uh, the technology doesn't exist for. Uh, confirmed project funding is available. So what we did is we applied through USDA in February twenty twenty-one. We received our letter of conditions late January twenty twenty-three. Um, and then we held the project kickoff meeting, I think about a week later from that. We applied for water quality planning targets, um, on the fourth of April, twenty twenty-three. Um, that one kind of goes back and forth because we did apply for them. Back in. I want to say twenty nineteen, um, but we received them in twenty twenty. They technically expired, but the state introduced a new convoluted process, which means we're good to go on water quality planning targets. Uh. Submit side applications to C D P H E. So we submitted, uh, on December of last year. Uh, that was about four months ahead of schedule. Um, we received approval of the lift station. That was in late May of this year and then the wastewater treatment plant review is wrapping up as of, uh, a few weeks ago when I talked to our review engineer at the state. We submit our process design reports to C D P H E this month. Um, those are in our final Q A Q C. And so we'll get those over to. Rob, Gigi and Bobby for a quick review, comments. And we'll meet with them to discuss any changes that they might have finalized those up and send that over to C D P H E. Uh, we're targeting quarter one of twenty twenty-five to finalize the design. So that's coordinating with integration and controls. Uh, process manufacturers, our sub consultants, Rio Grande County on the force main alignment. Um, and that's to bring the design to a hundred percent, to make it ready. And then so by the end of Q one, starting Q two, we're planning to bid the project. And begin construction around Q three, we'll probably do a sixty day bid process somewhere in that ballpark and then we'll. We extend if, uh, there's a lot of questions and stuff like that, things, you know, being addressed and changing how a contractor might bid the project. Uh, and then we'll issue the notice to proceed in quarter three of twenty twenty-five. And including treatment, force main, lift stations, collection systems improvements, we're estimating around two years of construction.
Richie?
Yes.
Before you flip.
Yeah.
So since this has been approved. Or since, since we got approval from the USDA rule development for the funding portion of it.
Hmm.
And it'll be almost two years. Until we get, I mean, since the approval that we get started.
Right.
From your observations, how does the budget look with the increased costs in materials today?
Um. It's, uh, kind of up and down depending on what you're looking as a whole. Process technologies have gone up. Um. I think in terms of scoping. We did a pretty good job upfront and right now we're kind of at the mercy of the market. Um, in terms of budget, we're looking at. Certainly more than what we scoped in the P E R. That's the scoping report that we submitted to USDA as the grant application. Um. But it's not. The project hasn't doubled in cost. Um, and so actually what we're doing, yeah, yeah. Uh, so what we're doing right now is we're carrying, um, a contractor who we've worked with successfully on a couple of projects. As a sub consultant for us to provide value engineering. And so we're targeting the end of this month to provide them with our sub consultants thirty percent and our ninety percent. And so they'll provide us with detailed cost estimating. Based on the entire scope of the project and value engineering. Oh, you'll save a buck here and a buck there. So that's the plan to just to make sure that we're continuing to keep a finger on the pulse of project cost and avoid some, some nightmarish number when we actually get bids and.
So the answer is we'll, we'll have better numbers probably in a few months.
Okay.
For you.
Okay.
Yes.
And if you all recall, we estimated this would be a thirty million dollar project. We've been approved for two ten million dollar loans. And then USDA has given us, granted a nine point two million dollar grant. We will still have to. Um. Get. Um, I forgot what kind of attorneys are called.
Law attorneys.
Yes, we'll still have to hire bonded attorneys and then the funding for construction. Through a different entity and then. USDA kicks in at the end of the project.
So the interim, we call that interim financing and you'll do it with somebody like Cobank. We worked with them plenty of times on previous USDA projects and it goes pretty well. Uh.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, you also got, uh. Close to six hundred thousand dollars in an energy and mineral impact grant fund. Um, so that's from Department of Local Affairs and that's, uh. Funding a, a significant portion of the design for the project.
Yeah, so that was a fifty fifty match that we have applied for. And so the difference, uh, our match came out of the wastewater fund, enterprise fund.
And then, uh, we've had our architects actually make up a couple of renders for y'all, um, just kind of. Make it not a bunch of squiggles and lines and things that I tell you are filters and make it real. So, uh, this is the headworks building right here at the plant. So. Um, you'll have a couple of overhead doors, that door on the right stores the rotary fan press, which is where you de-water biosolids over there on the left. That's where raw wastewater enters the plant and we do all that coarse solid and F O G removal. Uh, the building's made of C M U and that's primarily because, um. When you look at code for wastewater treatment plant headworks, everything has to be explosion proof. And so that's one of the rules is, you know, do a C M U building or you need to be able to encase. The headworks room in some sort of concrete masonry unit.
Is that what C M E O stands for?
C M U, yeah, concrete masonry, masonry unit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and then right behind there, you can see the aeromot treatment process. Those are the basins. So they'll extend above the ground about fourteen feet and they'll be buried the other four feet. Um, this is. My three D models of the treatment plant. Uh, so not quite as aesthetic, but they're more geared towards construction plans. I just happened to turn it in an artistic way to show you guys some cool equipment. So. Uh, coming into the plant right there on the lower right, that's a center flow band screen. So that's the mechanical screen that'll remove things, uh, you know. Towels, jeans, whatever somebody decides that they had to throw in the sanitary sewer for some reason, you'll see it all. Um. Moving upstream there, you've got a, the grit concentrator. So that's just a stacked tray unit and it provides increased surface area to settle out things like. Sand, uh, you know, smaller, finer granular debris. Um, coffee grounds, things like that. That'll actually send the grit over to this other process technology that's right on the other side of the channel. Um, that's called an octocup and grit snail. What that does is it cleans, it washes, it de-waters the grit. And so what that does is it reduces odor, it reduces. Organics and weight of the grit ultimately dispo- reducing disposal costs and nuisances of the plant. Um. Going out of the facility, you've got a partial flume, which is just a flow measurement device and those are required by C D P H E to make sure that your plant's not exceeding its hydraulic capacity. And then over there on the top right, that's a rotary fan press. And what that does is that takes biosolids from your secondary treatment process. Squeezes the water out of it and then discharges of it into a conveyor, which then conveys the sludge outside of the treatment plant into a dumpster for disposal. This is the treatment building. Um, this will house some storage space for the. Public Works Department, primarily, you know, mostly stuff pertaining to water and wastewater treatment. Um, this will house the metals removal. Um, this will house the metals removal filters, your UV disinfection and your effluent monitoring. Uh, and blowers as well as, uh, your plant's primary control panel will be located in here. Um, this building will be fairly tall, um, towards the back. Those filters are about eighteen feet tall and you need. About five feet above them to perform the required maintenance and to construct them. So looking here, uh, we spent a lot of time in the design, just trying to future proof the plan and make sure that, you know, if anything ever expands hydraulically. That all it is is bringing in additional equipment. So you see, you'll see, uh, sixteen filters here. And five of them are grade back, fourteen filters, sorry, and five of them are grade back. And so what that is, is, uh, just partitioned space for new filters. In case the city experiences significant growth and needs a hydraulic re-rating, instead of just demoing the brand new plant. That's so awesome. Uh, we just bring in a couple of new filters. And, uh, same thing here is you can see there's another grayed out little rectangular guy right there. That's your UV disinfection system. We're providing redundant reactors that's required by the state. And then with a third, um, you would be able to increase your hydraulic capacity one and a half times. So that was kind of the target was providing room for one and a half times. What we're permitting for y'all right now. Uh, over there in the upper right, those are, that's the blower room. I don't have three D models of those, um, but. The blowers are essentially the lungs of your treatment process. Um, when we talk about things like B O D, that's biological oxygen demand. And so. Organic waste equates to biological oxygen demand. So this is the lungs of the plant. It's breathing the oxygen into the wastewater treatment stream. To ensure that, uh, adequate treatment takes place. Uh, we also have a newly proposed office and lab building, um, just to locate it, you know, immediately adjacent to the facility. Ensure that it's easy to get those composite samples that are required for permit compliance into the lab and, uh, assess and analyze, you know, in a timely manner. Um. And, uh, that's where Bobby will set up shop most of the time. That'll be his vacay. Um, and then this is a, just a full render of the site, just to kind of give you an idea of scope. Um, you can see we're encroaching into the pond a little bit more, but you know, this is a Google Earth image that we draped our architect's renders on. So. Just to kind of give you an idea of the finished product, we'll have, uh, you know. We'll need the concrete pavement for parking for access and for delivery of, uh, chemical and materials. Um, and then that's the Aromat, that's a better look at the Aromat Treatment Basin, which is, uh, you know. What I said would be the remover of B O D to assess nutrients. So just to wrap it up really quick, uh, the existing wastewater treatment plants are in non-compliance and technologically limited. So that's why we need to do a new project, get you guys into compliance. Um, there was insufficient funds in the capital enterprise fund, um, and the existing rate structure couldn't. Keep up with that while you guys are still in non-compliance. So we applied for a grant loan combination through USDA. And that's why we've got, uh, rate increases. The project delivery is on schedule, which is awesome. And then the new wastewater treatment plant will ensure ongoing compliance with your discharge permits. So, uh, yeah, love to answer any questions you guys have.
I have a couple more.
Okay.
So Richie, what is this going to do for increased cost in chemicals? And testing.
You mean, what's the implications of the project on chemical costs? So we detailed that in the P E R. So. Um, the new wastewater treatment facility will eliminate chlorine, but then you're required to have a handful of other chemicals. And those are primarily dealing with the metals removal. Um, and because that chemistry is fragile, you can't really just have these filters remove metals. You need to. You need to inject these chemicals to precipitate things, to capture things and regenerate media. Um, when we wrote the P E R. Uh, we estimated. The increase to maintenance costs, and I don't want to put my foot in my mouth and give you a bad number. But, um, there will be additional chemical costs compared to the lagoons right now, which are pretty no fuss. Um, the Veterans Wastewater Treatment Plant, I know they use some. I want to say sodium hydroxide, um, but that, their cap- soda ash. Um, but their capability of like dosing it appropriately, it doesn't really exist anymore. That infrastructure is kind of decayed and so. What ends up happening is the treatment process gets slugged and soda ash is a little bit slower to release. Um, so it's not a nightmare, but, uh, everything we're doing is what we call flow paste. So. Instead of dumping a, a sack of soda ash in the treatment stream, that really only needed a couple of sprinkles or a little bit of that. Um, what we're doing is we're using that influent flume to measure and dose chemicals ahead of the Aromat Treatment Process. And a flow meter after the Aromat to dose chemicals into the filters. So we're. We're optimizing and reducing waste as much as technologically possible.
So we can anticipate increased costs twenty percent, thirty percent?
Uh, I want to say it was quite a bit more than that. Yeah.
I want you guys to hear that. Let me see Rob's budget.
Must be liquid injection with injection pumps or?
Yeah, so for the. Before you go into the Aromat, there, we're using magnesium hydroxide. So your existing wastewater lacks the alkalinity, um, which is just like water's ability to maintain a, a pH as other things are introduced into it. So we're introducing magnesium hydroxide. It's much more cost effective to dose that. As a dry solid into the process stream. So, uh, we're providing a silo that will slowly auger. The dry solid into the flow stream as it enters into the Aromat. For the metals removal, all of those are, are liquids and we're using metering pumps. So the metering pumps are tied to the flow meter, which is like, okay, I've got five hundred gallons a minute coming in. And so they're like, okay, well, I'm going to. Rotate as much as it's needed to maintain a two milligram per liter dose, stuff like that. So all three of those chemicals are, are liquid.
And so what's the reclamation of the old plant's gonna look like?
I think that's more of a ninety percent design perspective and we haven't. Really gotten to what that looks like, um, as far as decommissioning the plants, you know, you need to do biosolids removal. Um, make sure that they're disconnected from any influent lines and, um. Do the necessary C D P H E abatement for decommissioning a wastewater treatment plant. And then as far as, um, the veterans plant, which has a bit more process technology, um. It mostly is, those ponds and clarifiers are, you know, decommissioned and then we can. Uh, look at either filling in the reactors, demoing the reactors and importing additional fill. And I think that's more of a conversation that we can have in our regular check-in meetings to kind of make sure that we're not going overboard and. Leaving a crater over at veterans or something like that.
So the lagoons go away. All those ducks will no longer have a home. We get a lot of ducks out there. What, um. Does the thirty million dollars include the decommissioning and reclamation?
Yeah, that was always in, included in, uh, the, the scoping report.
Okay. And then will we need additional employees?
Um, I mean, it wouldn't hurt. I think Bobby has a steep learning curve ahead of him. So having additional employees would be great. As far as the state is concerned, they're not dictating your staffing requirements. And I think it's really more of a, uh, your operator is a class A operator, which isn't very common in the San Luis Valley. And keeping him happy is a, is an asset, absolutely. So if he's pulling his hair out and needs a guy, I think, you know, at least. Having somebody who can be a gopher for him or a ringer would be absolutely, you know, an asset.
Well, they all need additional training.
So as long as Bobby's the O R C, yes, they will need additional training. Aromat does, um. I think it's a three day course where they'll take a few operators from a city and basically run them through the Aromat. At their manufacturing facility. Um, so that's included, uh, in the contract. With the contractors, they have to provide manufacturer personnel to come out on site to perform startup and testing. But also operator instruction. Aromat just happens to kind of go above and beyond with being like, come out to Kansas, let's learn on Aromat and stuff like that. But. Um, that would be the time to identify, you know, before we get there, identifying who's. Basically going to be Bobby's number two and making sure that they're on site for all of that startup and all that training.
Then can we anticipate utilities going down? So since this is a energy efficient, new and improved?
No, I don't think utilities will go down. No. So you're introducing, uh, three lift stations into your wastewater treatment system. Uh, the blowers at the plant are much larger than the blowers at veterans now because you're combining facilities. Um, those blowers will be much more efficient than the existing blowers the city has because you have blowers at Henderson and veterans. Um. We've done everything we can to optimize efficiency in the plant. You know, everything's tracking based on readouts from dissolved oxygen in the basins. To, you know, flow through conduits and making sure we're not wasting chemicals. Um, but overall, your system's larger and more complex and likely to be more costly in terms of utilities.
So with the increase in the rate study over the last three years, that's just to pay for the loan. That doesn't absorb the additional costs.
No, it does. It does. So yeah, USDA requires us to lump in, uh, debt repayment. As well as additional O and M costs into the rate increases. So that's big then.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Yeah. I'm a newbie and I'm a flatlander. Okay.
Hmm.
But you've got Henderson and it's by my house.
Hmm.
And you guys are coming down and then going east and then coming back up with your pipe. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Why aren't you taking the ipot news?
Because it's private property. We'd have to.
No, that's all we had in these months in there already.
Yeah, we had. Yeah.
As the project manager, do you have anything else to add?
Nope, I don't. I, it's funny. I, I used to have to talk all the time, but I don't have, I have to say a word. No, but the project is going well, but it's, it's on schedule, which is, you know, good. It actually a little ahead of schedule, so. Um, we just hope to get it through the finish line and, which we will, so. Very confident in that.
Right. Thanks for your time, y'all.
Okay, thank you guys. Appreciate all the information. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution two zero three four dash one one, resolution updating the employee organizational chart in the city of Montevista.
So the work chart was out of date. What this new organizational chart shows is our two lieutenant positions. The patrol lieutenant and the investigation lieutenant. Weren't on the, the last one, under finance director. We eliminated a position last year and so it reflects that position gone. Um, the H R risk management person, Shannon, she reports to me. Before that was under finance. And then, um, adding the co- Sky High complex, that wasn't on our old, old org chart. And so we've got six full-time employees now associated with Sky High. And then the position of city planner is me. We asked you, asked that you approve this organizational chart or tell me I need to start cutting positions?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, resolution updating the employee organizational chart. For the city of Montevista. That's been moved in second and to approve. Resolution two zero two four dash one one, updating the employee organe- employee organizational chart for the city of Montevista. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Council Howard?
Yes.
Council Lorenz?
Yes.
Council Watson?
Uh.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, updating the. Excuse me, updating the employee organizational chart for the city of Montevista.
Hey, we will leave the ordinance of second reading of ordinance nine two nine. The ordinance of the Montevista City Council regulating possession firearms in the Montevista city buildings and meeting locations. Mayor, now so. So this is the second and final reading of the ordinance that you requested, which was firearms ordinance, um. Basically, this is, uh, pretty simple. Um, and this is the opt-out ordinance, uh, that some municipalities are passing in the state. Um. So this says it shall not be a violation of C R S eighteen twelve one oh five point three. Brief any person to carry concealed firearm in any municipal building or municipal parking lot adjacent to city buildings, as long as. Such persons have to comply with provisions of C R S eighteen twelve two oh one at sea regarding permits to carry concealed weapons. And provided for, uh, nothing in this subsection is intended to allow. Firearms in those places specified in C R S eighteen twelve one oh five point three one, which is the judicial areas. And, uh, because those are not allowed in any case. Um, open carry of all firearms and all public buildings is prohibited, except of course for law enforcement officers, um. And the second part simply says that, uh, you've got to, in order to conceal carry, you've got to have a concealed carry permit. Uh, under the state statute. So basically this is allowing for concealed carries. There's no restriction on that, uh, except in places where it's specifically prohibited. A few places like, um, Kids Connection, for example, childcare center, you can't conceal carry there. Um, but other than that, um, whether you're a citizen, whether you're a council member, staff, et cetera. In concealed carries. So that's just a. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine two nine on second and final reading.
Second and final. It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance nine two nine, an ordinance of the city of Mon-. An ordinance of the Montevista City Council regulating the possession of firearms in the Montevista city buildings and meeting locations. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Council Howard?
Yes.
Council Lorenz?
Yes.
Council Watson or Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty nine on second and final reading. The ordinance of the city of Montevista City Council reg- regulating the possession of firearms in the Montevista city buildings and meeting locations.
Okay, we'll go to contracts, agreements and leases. Twenty twenty four renewal of city of Montevista airport lease operating contract for Jedidiah.
So Jed offered to be here today, but there in the thick of potato harvest. And so I said that was not necessary. The contract, we did not make any changes. Uh, he is doing a great job and it's, has been a great go between, between. The hangar tenants and Rob and I, and they take on extra. Maintenance things, I guess. Um, he helps kind of make sure some of the weeds are whacked down and. And things have stayed safe and that sort of thing. So I really appreciate Jed and, and what he's, his contribution is to the airport. And to his pilots. And I think probably. Would agree, so. These are just, this is just a one-year contract that we renew every year. And so, um. His contract is up in, in October.
I have a question. I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt, uh, twenty twenty four. Renewal the city of Montevista airport lease operating contract for Jedidiah. Uh adopt twenty twenty four renewal of city of Montevista airport lease operating contract for Jedidiah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty four renewal of city of Montevista airport lease. Operating contract for Jedidiah Elthor. Is there any more discussion?
Thought in a. Initial paragraph talks about agreements between the city and Jedidiah Elthor DVA airplane aviation, so. Is the contract with Jet with Jet Elthor directly or is it with the LLC?
I don't know how to answer that.
It's it's really with Jed, but he's functioning as the LLC.
Who's liable?
That's. I would assume the LLC is not heavy pressing.
He's right with the contracts with him personally, he would be liable, not the LLC. Because that's a legal question.
If the contract's with the LLC, he's. Protecting himself against personal liability, that's the gist of it.
Yeah. The contract that says it's with him. DBA LLC, which doesn't necessarily mean the contract's with him.
If it's. The an LLC should not be a DBA. It should be. Uh with either the LLC or with him personally.
Right.
However, you're gonna. Do that. But if it's with the LLC. Well, that's that's the reason you put together an LLC is for personal liability.
Exactly. So it seems like the contract should be with the airplane aviation LLC.
Okay, we can make, we can make that change. I'll bring that up to him. Under this for four years, so you're the first one to catch that, Councilman. So thank you.
Well, I don't want to thank me, but you know, down at the bottom, I mean, he should be signing as the. Manage uh manager, whatever, of airplane aviation, not Jedidiah Elthor of FBO.
Okay, so you guys want to pull it and no?
I don't.
Okay.
You make the change. Just make it a comment.
So you wanna? I do you wanna amend it to? Change that?
Well, okay, I'd amend the motion to. Uh revise the contract to be with the helping. Helping aviation LLC. Jed Elthor is a. I don't know what he's called himself, operating manager, manager.
He's referred to as the fixed base operator.
What's his title in the LLC? They have different titles in the LLC. Whatever his title is in the LLC, that's how he would sign.
Thank you.
Second. Okay, so we have the amended motion to go ahead and approve the contract. For the renewal of city of Montevista Airport lease operating contract for Jedidiah Elthor. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Council Howard?
Yeah.
Council Lorenz?
Epstein.
Council Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries for two one and one of staying. Um to approve the twenty twenty four renewal of the city of Montevista Airport lease. Operating contact contract for Jedidiah Elthor with the amended revised contract re. Reflecting the LLC.
All right, staff proposal, reports in action, city clerk.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um just a few things to go over. First of all, the CML Fall District Meeting is in Lahara on. September seventeenth at six o'clock, um and I need to know if any of you would be interested in attending that. Um your spouses are welcome, and if they are gonna go, it's twenty dollars for your spouses. The city will pay for you to go. So if you're interested in going, I need to know that by the end of next week. Court has been moved to September twenty fifth this month, and we have about um forty-five. Cases on the docket, um two of those being trials. Um those are traffic trials that are coming up. Uh business license, um something I just kind of wanted to bring to your attention, um that came up. With the food trucks. Um I brought this up to you all before. I know three of you were on the council prior, two of you were not. And you have all told me to kind of let food trucks be and give them a business license. Um I'm bringing this up again because I want to know what your thoughts are on proceeding with writing a policy for food trucks. Where they can be, how long they can be. Um right now, I do make them purchase a business license. It's been brought up. Well, how do we know they're paying taxes? So. Food trucks have to have a sales tax license. When they submit their sales tax, they have to, on their sales tax, they have to write down. There's a section on their sales tax form that they have to submit. What county they were in, what city they were in, and how much they collected the day they were in the city that they. Had um parked there. So when the sales tax is submitted to the state. The state submits the sales tax to the county, and then the county submits our portion to us, so they know. Exactly where they've been, so we do get the sales tax on the food trucks. So that was a question that was brought up. How do we know we're getting the sales tax from the food trucks? We do get the sales tax from the food trucks. I did do a spot check on a couple of the food trucks. That are in Montevista today, and we have received taxes on those food trucks. So. Um so I just kind of want to know, do you want me to move forward with doing a policy? Or do you want me to just keep going with what we're doing? I think it would be in the best interest for both planning. Movements and with the way that the planning and zoning is working through our land use policy. That we write a policy for food trucks. But I need to know what you all would like us to move forward with.
So the concern has come up from some of our of our local restaurants. That the food trucks are taking business away from them and the business, the food trucks are not local. At least local to Montevista. And um a business license is twenty-five bucks. And I I think we should also put some sort of guidelines on it, and I think we should in- increase the the fee for them.
Are you looking for action or are you looking just for a nod?
I I just kind of want to nod if you want me to proceed um writing a policy within an ordinance for food trucks. Um and I do think it's in the best practices to do this. Um we didn't really get inundated with food trucks until COVID hit. And then they're they're just popping up more. Absolutely. Um Faith Henley Park, uh the Veterans Park, um I don't know if you've all seen, but the concrete is completed. Um the brick order was placed yesterday. Um we ended up with two hundred bricks ordered from the public, so we have twelve, the twelve by twelve bricks, we ended up with forty-eight of them. The eight by eights, we ended up with thirty-seven, and the four by eights, we ended up with a hundred and fourteen. Um so I did place that order yesterday. Those bricks should be in within hopefully four weeks. Um and then North River Greenhouse will be laying those bricks in October. And then Gigi, myself, Scott Deacon, and Philip Mackey are meeting next week. To plan the Veterans Day celebration for November eighth. Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, you need a? Public Works.
Good evening, council, um. People may report fairly short. I did not have a a written report for you tonight, but I did want to touch on a few things. Um first, I just wanted to share with you a letter that we received from the Public Utilities Commission. Concerning the proposed um railroad crossing clo- closures there at Faraday and on. Franklin Street. This is a notification and I won't bore you for with all of it, but just kind of point out some of the big po- the major points. Um an application has been filed with the Public Utilities Commission on July thirtieth of twenty twenty four. By the Colorado Pacific Railroad LLC. Um for an order authorizing the closure of both Faraday and Franklin Streets. Crossings in Montevista, Rio Grande County, and State of Colorado. This application is available for public inspection at the commission office located at fifteen sixties. Broadway Suite two fifty Denver, Colorado. Between eight and five P M excluding weekends and state holidays or by accessing the commission's E filing system at. Colorado dot gov backslash D O R A backslash P U C. Any person desiring to intervene or participate as a party in this proceeding shall file a petition. For leave to intervene under the commission rules of practice and procedure. Um within thirty days of the date of this notice. Um the commission staff must file any objection, notice of intervention, or other appropriate pleadings within seven days of this. Notice expiration. All persons who file an objection will. Um shall do so in accordance with the instructions set forth by the rules of practice and procedure. Um they have also concluded that at this time, the applicant has not filed any testimony. Nor has the commission deemed this application to be complete. Um and the applicant has seeking a decision within two hundred and ten days. So we probably won't hear anything on those two roads until probably first or second quarter of next year. So um unless council directs me, otherwise I was gonna go ahead and pull those two. Signs that we have at those crossings, I'll just pull them because none of those dates are actually applicable at this point. And then at a later date, once we have a decision. Probably bring it back to, if anybody's opinions have changed. Um just to keep it fair and and upfront in the public. And then other than that, um just a couple of things. Um I thought piggybacking kind of on the this discussion of the wastewater plant, I'd provide you guys a project update tonight. Um the Patterson Street project is going pretty good as far as it's been done, but unfortunately with these rains. We've been experiencing some flooding on those roads. Unfortunately, the new asphalt has highlighted some shortfalls in our storm drainage system. That we're gonna need to work through um today with when Element was up, we went ahead and looked at some of those streets. And we found some issues and they're gonna try to help me come up with some plans to address those. One of the plan or one of the issues is that the outfall where our system actually outfalls into the ditch. Um those water levels are stagnant, so they're the same at the ditch as they are in the pipe, so instead of the pipe completely. Draining, it's always holding water in there. Um so when we do get these torrential rains, it's literally overloading the system and it just doesn't have anywhere to go. So we're gonna have to look out. A mile past the city towards the river to try to figure out how to clean that ditch is really the ultimate thing. And then we found um another area right there at Second and Jefferson. Where they put the sanitary sewer right through the middle of the manhole. For our main storm drain, and it's creating a backup, which then affects everything south and along fourth. So um Patterson pipe right now is clear and it's empty, um so is Dennis. Um Davis has a little bit of water, but Cruz went out today and we flushed all those lines again. Um so we're gonna continue to work on it. Um we do have a property that is consistently flooded and has done some property damage. Um I've got a plan that I'm gonna try to work with the owners on and see if they'll buy into that. Um to fix the floor of their shed, actually get it above where it's flooded. So just touching on that, our taxiway and taxi lane project. We're two weeks into this project as far as construction, and so far things are going extremely well. The new taxi lane has had the majority of the dirt work completed and they are ready to blue top that. And then starting on Monday, ACI will be starting the taxiway improvements. Um so that will mean the apron will be closed as of Monday and that closure will last through October. Um they just won't be able to use the apron area, they can still use the runway. So we won't actually have to close the runway until we get to the paint area and that'll only be for a few days. Our alley project there in the downtown, it's still in design. Um we are working on the subsurface utility engineering right now. Um two weeks ago, we did some onsite potholing for SDM and we discovered a whole lot more utilities. In those two alleys than what we were first thinking beyond just the the gas line, the water line, and the sewer. Um there's a lot of other things in there um that's making it a lot more difficult, so they're redoing some things. We're working with some like the clinic lately um that go through some of that, but we found some downspouts. They're actually attached to the sewer system that we're gonna have to deal with. Um so a lot of things, so we're working on that. Our schedule as it stands right now. Um on September seventeenth, we'll submit the C dot permit application because we will have to do some workout in C dots right away. Um ninety percent design is anticipated to be done in November, at least that's when we'll get it, November seventeenth. We'll get it to look at um and then a hundred percent and construction di- documents are proposed by the end of December. So beginning January, we should be able to go out to bid, so. On the MMOF project, uh we just submitted today. All the documents for our field office review. Um we have scheduled that meeting to take place. On October fifteenth, that gives C nuts a chance to review all the documents and make any changes that they feel we need to. Uh we're a little bit behind on this project, but we're still believing that we can get the bidding out towards January, February timeframe. So that too is gonna happen next year. And then the last one I wanted to touch base on is our Sky High E O C. We have two parts of this project that are now happening happening simultaneously. The generator design is underway and they've gotten to the point where they're working on actual documents. For bidding, um are the Baba, the Buy America Act. Is causing a little bit of issues as it limits the amount of. Manufacturers we can get. Um a lot of the manufacturers for generators. Source materials or engines, engines are kind of the big one right now um from outside. Um so the Buy American Act is restricting us to pretty much either CAT generators. Or um. Generac, I think it is, is the other one. Um but most of the other manufacturers are using engines and stuff that's outside of the U S. So I gotta call in to try to get complete clarification on where our grant goes and what. If we're doing the Buy America Act or if we're doing Baba, there's a little bit of difference in those. So looking through that, as far as the other side of it, which is the restroom, the RV park. Um those have been awarded to Davis Engineering. We've held our kickoff meeting and we went out on site, we toured it. Um DJs went ahead and forwarded the survey that he had done. To them and they're kind of going through that survey and what we talked about while we were on site and starting to work on that, so. Hopefully, we're moving right along with that one too. So at that point, um any questions from council?
Since it always rains on council days, hope anything on the theater?
Nothing big enough that it caused any influence. So we didn't have any flooding today. Um we did do a little grading yesterday out on um Davis. And so hopefully it looked, at least from the second part of the storm that came in. That that grading did help, it kept the water moving to the inlet, so. So we didn't have the pool. Um sometimes the citizens. Don't help us when they put dirt and gravel out there and they kind of block the flow, but we went ahead, got rid of some of that yesterday, continue to do that. Um and then speaking on what Richie had for. Continue to do that. Um, and then speaking on what Richie had for the fog. Um, we did just finish our contract with our sewer cleaning. And we did lariat this year and we found a ton of grease in there, um. In in that subdivision, right at the the lift station, there was a six foot log of grease that they pulled out of there. And then we had one property that I will contact the owner of that property, but as they were cleaning it, uh, a four inch log of grease about that long slid out of their pipe. And then a rush of water and as they were pushing the material back, another log came out of roughly the same size. So whoever the property owner is there, they're dumping a lot of grease. I'm I'm really surprised their their trap isn't completely clogged. But it was literally, I have film of it, is literally the size of the pipe and about that long, just solid grease coming out. So, so we will be, as the year goes on, before the year's end, I'll have you guys in front of you to adopt the a fog policy for us as we move to the new plant. So. Anything else, council?
I have a question for you on the wastewater treatment plant. When they were talking about all the waste, then it can go to the landfill.
Right.
Is that hired to be done or is that where the city then takes on a truck or something?
Those are both options at this point. The way it was originally designed and talked about was it would be a dumpster and then waste management or whoever we contract with would haul it away. So, yeah, so that's kind of what it is. But yeah, the option for us to do basically a roll off with a truck is also an option too. It's just an added cost that we didn't really plan for.
And and Rob, can you address the chemical costs a little bit?
Okay. So right now we don't have with either veterans or um, Henderson, our our main cost is chlorine. Um, there's no other chemical treatment that we'd really use at the plant. At veterans, um, we do adjust the P H every once in a while, so we use soda ash. Um, and then we chlorinate that on the backside before it gets discharged um, to take care of any pathogens. Um, so with the new plant, while we won't have chlorine, um, he talked a little bit about the stuff that goes in at the front, but on the, on the metals, we'll be putting three chemicals and one of which is ferret um, and some other coagulants. And those are going to drastically increase our chemical cost because those are going to be something that's going to be injected in the system every day um, several times during the course of the day as the process is being treated. Um, so we'll have that. Um, so those costs are going to go up. And like I said, um, we did figure those costs of operation increases into that thirty million dollar and that's also figured in to where our monthly rates are going. Okay, so that's all there. So I do not anticipate at this point needing to do anything different. Um, once we get where we think the estimated cost is from their contractor, then it's matter of we'll scale back what we need. You saw the drawings and the ideas of the the offices and stuff like that. So all of that stuff at this point is kind of questionable and up and, you know, see where the budget goes. The main idea is to get us a treatment plan, get some corrections on our, um, collection system. So, you know, we need to cut certain things, then we'll view. If you looked at that plan where the blower building is and where the processes is, there's enough room. If we have to, we can put the offices in there. I don't like it because they have to listen to the blowers. And the the two plants that we toured had that. One was ungodly loud. I I don't even know how they work in there. It was, it was terribly loud. The other one was but so that's why we said, let's just keep our building separate. So. And we did put a little extra storage in there for some of the stuff so we can keep like our flusher and stuff inside. So.
Everybody else?
Right.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Rob. I T.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Going to be a little bit longer than usual as we missed you last month as we were all out for training. But, uh, as for last month, what we had done, we set the temporary squad room over there at, uh, Sky High Stampede. That seemed to be perfectly fine. I don't think we had any issues with it. All we had to do is just go back through and just clear everything up and move the computer back for Stephanie at the end of stampede. At Stephanie's request, we also got drone photos of the turnout of the first night of stampede during the Winona concert. All those photos have been sent over to Stephanie. I think she's using them on the website. I'm not really sure what those photos are being utilized for at this current point. Uh, kids connection, they're having issues with their cameras with the playback that has been fixed. So everything should be good there for them. We did three office moves last month as well for H R planning and I don't remember what the last office was. But we did three office moves, which also required us doing redoing a door handle of one of the scanning doors for H R. And then all four of us in I T got our I T L foundations before certification. What's that is just practices for managing I Ts so that way we can try and be a little more efficient and hopefully help you guys with whatever you need and overall it's make everything run a little more smoothly. As for this last month, we got drone photos of the Sky High Campus. This was at request of Gigi. And I think those turned out fine. I haven't heard any issues with them and I'm aware they can be continued to be used until more things are added to the Sky Campus. We moved a camera here in City Hall. We had one camera that was kind of problematic, so that's been moved to a better location and is now watching access between the P D and City Hall side. With that as well, we had general camera adjustments. We had to adjust a couple of cameras angles. That way they come to think a little bit better. All that's been done and hopefully making the building a little more secure. We did some old cable cleanup that has helped reduce some of the noise on our network. And then we pushed some Casella pitch to the server and other than that, there's just in the general fixes, security patches to the Windows computers and servers. Are there any questions?
Anybody? Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you guys.
You as well, two things. City manager. I told you them little papers hold a lot of notes.
Um, to share kind of a funny story about with the I T and our police department. You know, we all talk about the ghosts in this building. And so there was one late morning or late morning and and a couple of our officers could hear some noise down this hallway and it scared them enough that that they were investigating, make sure there wasn't somebody over here. And, um, and so when we look back on the security cameras, they're all walking in with their flashlights. And they said, why didn't someone just turn on the light switch? They're being very careful. They had, we had a good, real good meeting. We, it was a it was a kind of a select picked group of of individuals sat down with Senator Bennett yesterday and talked about the transmission line. The, um, Alamosa County received a federal grant in order to do another study at the transmission corridors. And so there's three areas that they have identified. And so Senator Bennett was very verbal in his support to continue on because Commissioner Lasky said that, you know, once they get this part done, they're going to have to have grant funding for an engineer to then kind of really play this out. So that's ongoing. Um, we attended a meeting last night with the friends of the national friends of the San Luis Valley National Wildlife Refuge. And I don't know if you guys all know, we've, we've talked about this in the past a little bit, but down our refuge, they're going to tear down that visitor's center. And this is part of the federal government's reasoning to cut their footprint. And so they're reanalyzing space. And since they built that new refuge facility, visitor center in Alamosa County, ours isn't on the chopping block. For consideration, it is on the chopping block. And so there's a lot of concern as far as our, the Crane Festival and this visitor's center gets more visits than Alamosas. And how are we going to handle this? And I did write a letter. I can't remember the gentleman's name, but the hierarchy to say why, you know, and that that their process was so limited in seeking comments. I said, the city of Mona Vista wasn't even aware of this until after you guys have come out with your information. And, um, and so I've been working with Aaron Minx with Senator Bennett's office on it as well. I don't know that we can save the building, but at least the new super, it's not the superintendent, the next person down, district ranger, whatever their title is. He's going to be relocating here from Kansas by the end of September. And he has assured me that he will work with Mona Vista and the Chamber and the Crane, Friends of the Cranes and to make sure that we have some sort of a tent possibly or space heaters. Um, the building will still be intact for this March of twenty twenty-five. But sometime after that, it'll be coming down. So that's a real, I think it's a real blow to our community. I've been working with Carla Shriver. She's been working really hard with the the golf board. And, um, applying for grant funding to get the new golf course. We're calling it, calling it a multi-purpose building instead of a clubhouse. Because multi-purpose will be more appealing for grant funders. And, um, so we just submitted, well, we're getting ready to, well, it's been submitted, but, um, we met with Dola today and Mayor. They're kind of encouraging us to ask for a little bit more money because this go around in March, or I mean, excuse me, at the end of October, they don't have as many applicants. So our timing may be right and maybe we can help get a little bit more funding from that aspect. A couple of dates you may, oh, I want to talk about weeds. Rob didn't mention weeds. We're getting, um, we don't have a code enforcer right now. And we've been getting lots of calls about this neighbor, that neighbor, the city, everybody's weeds. And with the additional um, rain, it's been really hard to keep up with it. We're trying to to figure out who really owns the weeds along the ditch. Is that the city responsibility or is it the ditch responsibility? And how do we enforce that? Uh, we've got one businessman in town who received a letter. So Rob went out and he's been sending some letters saying, clean it up or else. And so we've got one prominent business person in town who's quite angry and we somewhat anticipated he'd be here tonight. Um, so if you're getting calls about the weeds, we're trying to get it addressed. You know, we only have so many people and we've got other, other priorities to take care of as well, but we're working on it. So there's a couple of dates you guys might care about. This next week, Wednesday and Thursday is the San Luis Valley Philanthropy Days. And they come into the San Luis Valley once every four years and we saw the list of the funders that are coming to us. And we've got some real big shots coming in. So I'm real excited about this opportunity. Rob, DJ and myself have all registered to participate. Stephanie was on the steering committee to help organize all of it. It's been a great group effort. But we're kind of trying to put together a, a one pager that says here are the things, our projects we have in place. This is where we've been successful. This is what else we want. And so we'll kind of split out and, you know, I'll take few, few of them, Rob will take a different set and DJ will take a different set so that we can cover as many as possible and tell, tell and sell our story to, um, everyone.
You said that was Wednesday and Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday. So they're going to want you, Mr. Mayor, to make opening remarks.
Cause it says Tuesday and Wednesday.
No.
Cause Tuesday nights, the
Are they having an opening reception or something Tuesday night?
Yeah, it's like, uh, starts at six thirty.
Okay. I haven't seen the final agenda. But I think your, um, welcome is on Wednesday. But I'll re, I'll verify that tomorrow for you.
Okay.
We don't want you to miss it. The Mona Vista School Bash Night is March the thirteenth. That Friday, it's from four in the afternoon to seven P M. They've invited everybody. And so if you've got a few minutes to just walk through and say hi, I think the superintendent and some of the teachers would appreciate seeing the city being represented. I think Anika has a booth set up and it's free hamburgers and schools hosting all of that. So that'll be over at the uh, I think the baseball field. And then you can have free tickets if you want to go to the football game. I would suggest you take a jacket. And then our, you know, we, our insurance company is Sersa. They are having a lunch also on September the thirteenth. That's a Friday. That'll be held at the Alamosa Rec Center. And that starts at noon. And it's always really interesting, um, the stats that they do have, the the changes in the laws that we should be aware of. And they usually have, um, you know, workers comp. Things to share. They have things about our law enforcement. So, um, I'm going to plan on at least going down for that, but I've invited department heads, but since it's a Friday, I don't know if anybody else will go or not. So it's been a very long week in a short three days. Questions? You good? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Here, we'll move on. Council committee, city commissions and council report. Mr. Reynolds.
I will be at the next meeting.
I don't have nothing either.
Brad?
Nothing tonight.
Alright, well, that. I did have a couple of comments, um, from citizens. One was on the ditch project. They thought it was very promising and thought it sounded like a great idea. And then Rob, kudos to you over on by the end of the park where you put lights over by Sonic. Where they put the lights, the one of the guys that was in there talked about that. Said since that light went up, he said the traffic has slowed down a bunch and it just changed. Some very positive comments on that. So with that, uh, if you see something, say something, take care of your neighbors and we will recess this meeting until September uh, nineteenth at six P M.